This is meeting to order at the place count for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're just gonna go right down in order here tonight. We thank all of you for being here today. The first item is consent agenda. All items when asked here are considered to be reviewed by the city council. It will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen requests in which event that item will be moved from the general order of business and considered separately in the normal sequence of agenda. Is there any changes? Is there a motion to?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to have item 11B removed from consent agenda because of conflict of interest and move to the regular agenda.
Okay, there's item 11B. Are there any other that have to be moved?
Vice Mayor, we should do the regular agenda as well, so.
Okay, we'll do the regular agenda as well then. Let's go ahead as presented here then. Where should we start on it then, Kelsey?
We should take a, there should be a motion from someone to approve the regular agenda, and I know there was one addition that we need to make too.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the regular agenda with the one addition then?
So moved.
Okay, Erin, you have?
Yes, I got it. Column nine I. It's for approval of offsite permanent application for Gatwick.
Okay, at that then. So there's a motion to approve the regular agenda but also to add nine I to do one for it.
Yes.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Then we'll go to the consent agenda then. We do have 11B. Are there any other items besides 11B? If none, is there a motion to go ahead, approve the consent agenda with it, remove of 11B?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. There are no, we have approval minutes here right now. Is there approval for the last month's meetings?
Make a motion to remove those minutes as presented.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. There's no public clearance here, so we'll move, we've got some guests here in the audience that came early. We've got people that have things going on tonight, so we're gonna change our direction, how we're gonna do it tonight. First, we're gonna have Kim Betcher to come up to the podium here. We're here for finance and 7D and E and I'm gonna take care of them, and if there's any questions for Kim.
Sure. Let's see, we're taking 7C first, which is consideration to accepting the Detroit Lakes Community Cultural Center annual financial statements and independent accounting report for year ending August 31, 2023. Byask Committee reviewed this at the committee meeting, reviews or recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to second to preserve issues to Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center annual DLCC financial statement and independent accounting report. We have a motion to second to approve that report as presented. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries.
Item D is consideration of approving a management agreement for the DLCC. I think it was just to clean up some language, kind of streamline things to align with other management agreements we have with other entities that are private partner, private public partnerships, and then also adjust the contribution. Correct, Kelsey?
That's correct, Vice Mayor and Council. Most of it is just made primarily technical changes. The main thing is under item number seven is our capital contribution is the $150,000 that we've talked about at the budget meeting. It'd be a five-year agreement.
Byask Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries.
Item E is regarding the roof and awarding the contract. Kelsey, you want to take a little bit of time and explain this?
Yep. Vice Mayor and Council, in your packet is an email from Peter Jacobson from the DLCC that just explains a little bit about the process. They contracted with Woodset, put together a bid spec. They went out and solicited bids. They received only one bid from Herzog Roofing. You see, the bid tab is also in your packet. The recommendation is to approve the total bid for all the flat roofs. Looking at prices, $339,310. Also, the recommendation is to approve the alternate to do the seam repair on the fieldhouse at a cost of $13,000. Now, basically, cover the flat roofs, and then the plan is in a few years, we'll look at doing the rest of the roof, the metal roof above the fieldhouse, but that's not need to be done right at this time.
So, item E is consideration to accepting the bids for the DLCC roof and awarding the contract in the amount of $339,310 plus the $13,000 add alternate to replace or prepare the seam on the fieldhouse roof. Byask Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to second, consideration to accepting bids for the DLCC roof and awarding the contract at Herzog Roofing in the amount of $339,310 plus an extra $13,000 for doing seam repair. We've got a motion to second. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Anything you'd like to add?
No, just thank you so much for all of your support. We look forward. We already have people interested in the, part of the management agreement is at the summer rec, and we already have kids asking when they get to start signing up, so thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Kim. Okay, we've got Kim taking care of, Kim, let's move on to Pat Peterson on item 6A. He's got some updates on your polar plunge. Okay, Pat, why don't you go ahead and explain what you have in mind here?
Yep, so our application for a special event was approved, but we had to make some, I feel, minor changes for the event coming up on the 24th for polar plunge. And there's two things that I need your approval on to move forward with. One is we'd like to put a snow fence up, not only on the lake, but also up the beach and around the post portion of the road on Saturday. So Friday would be, the lake fence would go up, and then Saturday morning after we close the road, we'll put the rest of the fence up. And also, I would like to get approval to put our two pods on the street in the parking lane closest to the beach, our sauna and our men's changing room. HUBS is agreeing to move those for us, but they can only do it on Friday, so I'd like to get those in there on Friday afternoon, park there, and they would stay there until they're picked up Monday. So both of the two chambers. The snow fence added around on the street after we close it on Saturday morning and have the two pods on the street because of the ice situation. Get it, please? Move those up onto the streets.
Turn this over to Matt, please.
All right, this was reviewed yesterday at Public Works Committee to approve the snow fence pending local gate utilities, and then also the staging area for the parking lane from Friday through Monday when Public Works was agreeable, and I recommend, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Can we have a motion to second for the Boys and Girls Club to make those changes so they can handle to have polar plunge? So unless there's any discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Also, I've got a letter here from Pat, and he's been awful busy up there, but he's taken time to write to all of us here at the city to say thank you to us for all the things that we do to help him to be successful. And we appreciate all that you do for us and for all the kids in Detroit Lakes, and you do a lot of things, and we don't take it for granted. And it's nice to get a letter from you saying thank you, but you, we should be ready, and you have to say thank you to you also. And then I know that you're looking for plungers. Just crack, you still have room for more plungers?
Hey, more than a year. 127 so far.
I'm gonna ask everybody here in this council to sign up.
I'll look for their names.
As a matter of fact, it was my idea here many years ago to do this because we needed to pay off a loan for a company called the Health Detroit Lakes to hire, and we didn't have the money, so we came up, we needed to raise $12,000. And we said, any money that was left over, we're gonna give it to a good cause, and that cause was to the Boys and Girls Club. But the idea next to it, there'd be somebody else on that cause, but Pat and them have hung on to that forever, so they've made it their money maker, and it's been very well run for. And I just hope that with all the weather happening, that we're gonna have a great turnout down there with spectators, but also jumpers. That's when they make the money, when somebody sponsors somebody to take a jump. And I would love that to be sponsored. I would give $500 if you take the plunge on polar plunge.
I, seriously, I am busy that day.
Put that out there, so if anybody else would like to take the plunge.
I'm for you, Matt. Maybe Matt's free.
Please that plan, with Pat do that, so. But thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's go on down that list. We have some more people on here tonight. We have Kayla and Erin from Sanford. It's item 6E, and they're gonna have a little talk about their project again. Dan, maybe you want to tell me what we've got going on. Item 6E?
Sure. 6E is consideration to approving the utilization of Safe Kids Grant Dollars for a life jacket loner station on the outside of the bathhouse. I guess we've got some people from Sanford to give a presentation. Okay, ladies?
Hi, I'm Erin, and this is Kayla, and we are here to present about our life jacket loner station. We've been kind of working with the parks board, and they've approved us to move on with this. And this is brought through a grant. It's a three-year grant with the U.S. Coast Guard and Save Kids Worldwide is how we have the funding for this.
Is it on?
Oh, I grabbed it on, but, okay. And the location that we selected or kind of have been talking about is the bathhouse right beside the pavilion. And we kind of selected this location because through communicating with others here, they talked about that beach being one that a lot of kids are at, plus it's right next to the marina, so there would hopefully be a lot of use of the life jacket loner station. Whoops, and then I'm gonna go far. But so if you look here, we can see that bathhouse from outside has a security camera there, and we've discussed implementing a outdoor loner station on adhere to the side of that bathhouse. And so, would it include a basically educational signage, which is featured on the next slide here? As an example, it is open to adjustments as needed, but then it also would have hooks that would be adhered to the side of the building to hold those life jackets. And we'd have multiple ones available in each size too for community members to be able to use. One more thing about the grant too is that we have built into the budget, the funding for replacement of life jackets is where in there, because we are to be outside, as well as if any go missing too, we'll be able to support with that as well. Yeah, so. And then we didn't, yeah, we didn't include the liability statement there too. It has been reviewed through Sanford, but we're happy to make adjustments and go back to that review process as, as we did too. Are there any questions that we can help support with?
So I'm on, I'm on the park board, and I just want to thank you that you came, you came to us several times, and we kind of talked through it, vetted it, talked through it, vetted it. So thank you for your persistence in listening and hearing the things that we maybe wanted to do differently from, from all the different options. So I just appreciate your time and attention to it. And then I think having our city attorney look at that liability statement would be an important piece before, before we pursue it. And then we also, park board did talk about not only the signage for the education, the liability station, the hooks, but maybe there's some, some art on the side of the building that can enhance the look of, of that life jacket station. So thanks again.
Thank you. You've enjoyed this process, and we're happy to be here.
I guess in terms of action, since it is, we do have the liability statement, our attorney does want to run that by our insurance company, and then also through his process to make sure that things are all on the up and up. So we won't be able to take action this evening, but hopefully next month. But I really appreciate the presentation and efforts to put forth, and hopefully our legal staff can work through the details they may.
Can we get back on the stones to get the information?
Yeah, I'm straight.
But thank you for coming to me.
Thank you.
Let's, let's move on. Before I move on to, I didn't mean to pick up Jackie, but I'll, I'll give $500 to the first city council member that asked me after the meeting tonight. If they'll take the plunge, I'll, I'll sponsor. And so, the first one that comes up to me after the meeting, I'll sponsor. I'll be waiting. I know there's some good candidates here. So anyway, let's move on to item 6F for Amy Stern, that she's gonna tell us about some exciting news here.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for taking the time. We are with, through Project 412, we have the Troll Project that we're bringing to Detroit Lakes, which is an artist from Denmark named Thomas Dambo, and he's a recycled artist who builds these incredible trolls that look something like this, out of pallets and, and old building parts and all sorts of things. And part of the project is to install six of them in the Detroit Lakes area, and we are requesting permission tonight to have one in the city park. And we brought that to the Public Works Building, or Public Works Committee, excuse me, yesterday. They're rather large. You can see this is the artist here. He's about 6'4", 6'5", and the trolls are, are pretty big. So going in the city park might not be quite this big, but we also worked with Jesse Schmatt Schreider and Sean, and just to figure out the right spot in the park for it.
Where in the park have we decided or have?
It's toward the top of the hill near the 18th tee of the Frisbee Disc Golf.
What about the Disc Golf?
That.
So the action item is consideration to, the request for Project 412 to approve the trolls in the city park. Public Works, this recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
I've got a motion to second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor.
With this, Amy, is there any back, I mean, any lighting for the evening, or any, I mean, are these made to be interactive, kind of like the mammoth climb type deal?
They, they are interactive. Probably no lighting.
Okay.
But there would be some signage.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If nothing, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. And then let's see.
Thank you, Amy.
Let's see what else we have. We have, we have, we have you here for item 5A and 5B in community development.
All righty. Item 5A, consideration of resolution approving preliminary plat of Providence Lakes, a community interest, a community, common interest community at 1141 U.S. Highway 59, Eagle Rock Estates. This was discussed last night at CDC. This was a unanimous decision at Planning Works, so we spoke about this last night. Give it a positive recommendation, move forward.
If you've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Is there any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Also have 5B then?
Yes, sir. Item 5B, consideration of resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow 48-unit planned unit development to be named Providence Lakes at 1141 U.S. Highway, otherwise known as Eagle Rock Estates. This here again was discussed at CDC last night with a unanimous positive recommendation from Planning Committee, so we will move forward with this topic.
Second. You've got a motion to second, and I do want to mention that this project, they're gonna have, the city won't be building roads, they're gonna build their own roads in there. And so, just for that information, but we got a motion to second. Any other discussion?
Just one thing to point out, this is not a finalized done deal. They still have to work with MINDOT on some conditions there. So just with a positive recommendation does not mean that this project will take place. Sorry.
So all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. And then let's see here. Sure. I think we've got, oh, excuse me, we've got Lisa back here. Lisa, come on up. We've got Minnesota Flyers right in Severley. I'm sorry, I forgot. I didn't see you back there, and I have a name written out. But Finance, Dan, you want to start with that?
Yeah, at least you want to just give a little, give an update on kind of your numbers and some of that stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Lisa Lingard. I am the executive director over at Minnesota Flyers Gymnastics and Fitness, and we provide many services to this lakes area and surrounding communities. We provide preschool classes, gymnastics, ninja, fitness classes, special needs classes for adults and youth, open gyms, parents' night out, early out care, birthday parties, day camps, special events, competitions, and many more. We're working and gearing towards more of a multi-use facility. Last time I spoke and gave information on the impact that we serve in the lakes area, we have 360 recreational students, 100 fly time, which is our special needs students, and 60 team athletes, equaling 520 kids, with 57 of them turned away and on a waitlist. I'm excited to share the numbers with you that we've had this last year. This fall in 2023, we had 446 recreational athletes, 100 fly time special needs athletes, 80 team members, equaling 626 athletes in our gym every single week, with 63 kids on the waitlist turned away. This winter 2023, we have 422 recreational athletes, 120 special needs athletes, 81 team members, and 25 high school athletes, totaling 648 athletes, and 93 turned away. Our spring registration opened yesterday, Monday, at 8:30 a.m., and by 9:30 a.m., we already had 262 athletes registered. Within 24 hours today, at 8:30 a.m., I checked our stats, we were at 367 athletes registered for our spring session. We have been operating since 2000 and have been self-sustaining since then. We are debt-free and continue to do fundraisers. Our largest one is being charitable gaming, with very small, some other small fundraisers throughout the year. We continue to spend and budget within our means. Our yearly budget does and always has accounted for any maintenance or repair costs that arise for which we have remained responsible for accordance with the contract with the city. We have a positive pro forma that states when our expansion happens, we will be able to operate and continue to be self-sufficient. We have started the capital campaign. We started asking in October, and I'm proud to say that we have $1.6 million in pledges started once we started in October, with several and many more out there still working towards that. We have yet to make this public, meaning that all those funds, that 1.6 is through private ask and donations. We have applied for the New Market Tax Credit Loan, which would forgive 20%, which would give us $700,000. We do not know if we will receive those funds, but we are at a good stature with the MMCDC, saying if they receive those funds, that we would be likely to receive those. And then Steve Daggett is who we would do the loan through with him, and he has provided a letter stating that the city would not be liable if we would default in a payment at any time. Do I have any questions?
Any questions for Lisa?
What was your, what was your fundraising target again?
For what?
For your capital campaign, sorry.
4.2.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
I was gonna say, they've got a very large building they're putting in to go with all these future kids that are trying to get in to be part of the gymnasium program. So they've stressed themselves out, and they've got the appeal with Steve Daggett, the city, they have no liability whatsoever, and we have Lisa's letter saying that they would be self-sustaining and debt-free, and they'll take care of building repairs. So it's a win-win deal for everybody.
Kelsey, you want to give us just a little background of why we're back here at this?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council. So it's been two years, I think. It feels like, it feels like.
Seems like it's only been a year, but it's.
Since the council last gave approval, and you know, at the time, the council basically said, you know, you need to have all the funding in place to proceed. I think the only wrinkle in this is we're looking at, they're asking for authorization, proceed with their project contingent upon receiving bank financing, and I think that's, that's the action item. So that way, you know, it's really gonna be then up to the bank to make sure that there's adequate pledges or adequate collateral to build the building and property, or, you know, basically their ability to repay whatever gap there is. So that's really the change is, you know, we went from, you gotta have all the money to do the project, to really just continue upon bank financing.
So the motion that we have is going to be approving the request to proceed with construction contingent upon financing being finalized and committed by Midwest Bank. Byask Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Thank you, Lisa, and I'm sorry I forgot you that.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's go back into our regular agenda here, then community development, and back to you, Matt.
I believe that takes care of my agenda, sir.
Okay, you have nothing else?
No, sir.
Dan, let's go over to Public Works ready, and we're gonna talk to Dan Jacobson.
All right, item 6B is consideration to resolution ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications, ordering advertisements of bids for the 2024 street rehabilitation project. John, do you have anything you want to add on this?
Unless there's any questions.
Okay. We've reviewed this several times. It's the, basically the rehab project we've got scheduled for this summer. Public Works discussed this yesterday, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, with the motion for consideration resolution to ordering improvements, approving plans and specs, and ordering an advertisement for bids for 2024 street rehab projects, committee recommends, we have a first and a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries.
Item C is consideration to resolution, resolution ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for Willow Springs Street Improvement Project. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any discussion?
Basically, John, you want to?
Just pointing out that this, the Willow Springs project will actually be bid with the, the previous agenda item as well. They're two separate projects, but we're bidding them as one construction contract.
And as some of you remember, we were gonna do this last fall, but we only had one bid came in, so that's why we said hold off and try to get more people to make, and hopefully get a better price on it.
Correct.
And so, with that, consideration resolution ordering approvals and approving plans and specs, and ordering advertising for bids for Willow Springs, we've got a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries.
Item D is consideration to a resolution approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2024 West Downtown Street Utility Project. John, would you take a swing at this?
Yeah, same, same thing. This is just our, our West Downtown project. We're wrapping up plans and specs on it. We've got a little ways to go, but I think by the end of the month, we're gonna be ready to go up for ads, excuse me. And so, I didn't want to wait until March to make the request, so we'll be going out later this month, probably bringing bids back later part of, of March, or maybe the, the April close.
Public Works that are reviewing this recommends approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Is this consideration resolution approving the plans and specs and ordering advertising for bids for 2024 West Downtown Street Utility Project. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries.
Moving down to item G is taking a look at the speed limit on Highway 59. Kelsey, John?
I'll start. Vice Mayor and Council, so kind of related to Providence Lakes project that was approved under community development. There's been some discussion with MINDOT about access to that property. One of the things that has been brought up by the developer and other businesses out there is about the speed on Highway 59 South. and other businesses out there is about the speed on Highway 59 South. So basically, the developer has asked if we would submit, the city would submit a request to MINDOT, basically in a letter form, requesting them to do a speed study to look at, you know, the potential of change in the speed limit on South 59. Since then, I've talked to Drew Larson at Subaru. He, I guess, very supportive. He's been kind of asking for the same thing, sees the issues with his business. I know Scott Wallace from Meadowland has also mentioned similar issues with varying speed on that stretch of highway. So what we're looking for is basically authorization from the City Council for staff to put together a letter to MINDOT requesting a speed study to look at the speed on Highway 59 South, and I would ask those other businesses to provide us with an accompanying letter, and we submit that all to MINDOT.
So the action item is to, John, you guys think?
I think so.
So the action item is to consider approving a request to change the speed limit of the Highway 59 South. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
If I may. Sure. What's all involved with a speed study, and how long does that take? I mean, is this a two-year thing with MINDOT or a ten-year thing?
No, more, more to the two-year. I won't specify exactly, but I mean, it would take probably several months from, you know, beginning to end. What they're generally going to do is actually analyze what the speeds are out there absent of any signs. So they sort of let people travel what feels natural and right, and analyze that, and at least they used to, set the speed limit right around that eighty-fifth percentile. I mean, ideally, you want everybody going the same speed, and that's, that's really the idea of the speed study.
Thank you. Can I comment on that real quick? When you're coming out of that roundabout, and I'm just as guilty, I'm at 60 miles an hour like right now. So it's, it needs to be looked at. And when you go into RG Subaru and you take a left hand going on 59 North, my biggest fear is getting someone coming right behind you in the smoke. So it's definitely got to be looked at in that regard.
So I like what you discussed, because we've got a housing project that wants to go in that we talked about earlier, but until we get this, their entry, we worked out, and like you said, this study is going to be from the roundabout all the way up to Highway 10 with that speed traffic kids. And like Kelsey said, we're doing the maintenance authorization staff to go ahead and contact MINDOT, MINDOT to go ahead and do this study. So with that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries.
Item H, I think we wait till, wait until that's, item H. So Item I is the City Engineer's Status Report.
Mayor and Council, not a whole lot of activity to report here this month. We've got a number of projects that we need to clean up, finish up next spring, Campbell Avenue, Summit Avenue, the Terry Street Dander subdivision, all of those. If the weather patterns hold, we could certainly be starting on that a little bit sooner than later, but we'll wait and see. Outside of that, we've talked about the Street Rehab project and going out for bids on that this evening. The same is true with Willow Springs, the West Downtown project. Well, one thing I would note, and I'll probably remove this from subsequent reports, is the Southwood Shore Estates. Project really hasn't had any movement. The developers, I think, sorting out what they're going to do there, so I'll probably remove that. Outside of that, we continue to work with final design with the water tower, sort of targeting, wrapping up that design and going out for bids probably around April of this spring. So, questions?
I will make a motion to approve the engineer's report as presented.
Is there a motion, a second? We got a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries. The next item is, is the Finance.
All right, we are at Item Seven B, which is consideration to approving the request for proposal for leasing the former police department building. Kelsey?
Yes. In your packet is a request for proposals for leasing the existing police department building. We had quite a bit of discussion about this over the last two months at Finance Committee. You'd see the draft that's in your packet basically limits the proposals to nonprofit or governmental entities. I believe the recommendation from the Finance Committee will be to basically open that up to basically any nonprofit or business entity, private, for-profit or nonprofit, who wants to submit a proposal for leasing the police department. The only other change we talked about is extending the submittal date instead of March 15th. I believe we're looking at March 29th, which is a Friday, to basically just give proposals a little more time to put together their, their proposal to the city.
So, yes, after much discussion this afternoon, the motion is to consider, consideration to approving the request for proposal for leasing the former police department building with the addition of adding in for-profit businesses, and then making the date for closing of the RFP, March 29th, and then also make council meeting as being the backstop for whether we make the decision by... After much discussion, the Finance Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion on that? Does anybody understand what we're doing with this motion? Are we voting for nonprofits or out profit companies? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries.
Now, we're moving down to Item Seven F, which is consideration to a resolution accepting the Library Certs Grant of $8,000. Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Mentioned that this is for a lighting for the library for $8,000. It is well needed over there, so with that, just we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. All in favor of going ahead and accepting the Certs Grant for $8,000, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries.
Item G, I will hand over to Heidi to give us a...
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor and Council, this item is basically an update of a policy that the council approved last year for leases. The update this time around just includes also subscription-based information technology arrangements. This is in relation to a new Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, regulation that we must follow and utilize in our audit for 2023, or beginning for years ending 2023. This just relates to how we account for and, and recognize certain subscription-based information IT arrangements, things like that. So whether or not those are capitalized over some years and sets a threshold of $10,000 as the capitalization threshold. So if we have smaller items that fall under that threshold, I don't have to take the time to look at those contracts and sort of weed through those in that as our auditors, which saves us time and money. So I just would ask the council to consider adopting.
So the motion is consideration to adopting the policy for lease and subscription-based information technology arrangements and coming, Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion on that at all? This motion, it must get us to approve the policy for a lease and subscription-based information technology arrangement coming. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries. Anything else you have there, Dan?
I don't think so.
Let's move on to Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee considered Item Eight Eight, consideration to issuing a taxi license to Laker Pedal Pub pursuant to their application of fees. Procedurally, I don't know that there's any action that we need to take. Do we need to do the resolution?
You do need to approve the taxi license. There's no liquor license with the business, but you do have to approve the taxi license. I can go in more detail.
I will defer to Kelsey. I have some notes here at some points I was going to make, but I don't know. Or I'll let you do that.
Sure. Vice Mayor and Council, so the application is for Laker Pedal Pub. It's basically a taxi license. Reason why it's a little confusing is there's a carve-out in both our ordinance and statute that allows basically pedal pubs to have consumption of alcoholic beverages on the pedal pub. So there was some discussion about, you know, do we need to issue that any type of liquor license? Short answer is no. The, the owner of the business cannot sell to any individuals. On the pedal pub is basically a bring-your-own type of situation. And then again, with that carve-out in statute or ordinance, they would be allowed to consume while on the actual pedal pub. So the action item is approving the taxi license contingent upon, of course, paying the applicable fee and providing us with adequate insurance.
Option, that should too, that the person that's operating taxi, doing the steering, driving, can that be drinking?
That's no fun.
So the, the committee is recommending that we approve the taxi license.
Okay, there's a whole motion. We have a second. So this is for issuing a taxi license to the Laker Pedal Pub pursuant to their application of fees.
I have some questions.
You have some questions here, Dan?
I'm just curious, the conversation at the Public Safety Committee, as we look at the, a couple of maybe concerns, and perhaps you all talked about it. I just wanted, I just want to ask the questions. Is this, my understanding is this, this pedal pub is on the sort of the shoulder of the road, and people, cars are needing to pass by them? Am I correct in my assumption? It's not, it's not like it's driving down the driving lane. It's over to the side, and cars have to pass by it.
I believe that's correct.
So...
Carrie, do you have a picture you could put up there too, about those things?
Not in the packet, but maybe...
I mean, yeah, so yesterday during the Public Safety Committee, I just pulled up a Google image of a pedal pub.
So, so are the operating hours into the evening? Are there lights on this for safety reasons?
Vice Mayor and Council, I believe there was lights on the pedal pub. We talked about hours of operation. There's no restrictions that we're aware of for hours of operation. And I guess the discussion at the committee was not to put any type of restriction on the hours of operation, but there, there's nothing that we know of in statute or anything that would restrict it. I don't know, Chief, if you have anything you want to add from a traffic law standpoint. I mean, my understanding is that these have to operate kind of to the farthest, to the shoulder as possible, obey all traffic laws, those type of things. But I don't know what other traffic laws would apply to a pedal pub.
I think in our discussion yesterday, we said that the liquor committee passed something similar here a while back, wasn't it?
Vice Mayor and Council, before my time, I understand that we, we had a pedal pub for a summer in Detroit Lakes. I don't know what happened, if they just decided it wasn't commercially feasible, they did, but my understanding is that we did approve one once upon a time.
And then were licensed as a taxi.
I just, I just wanted to express my concerns. I'm not against this. I just want to make sure we're understanding what we're getting into. If, if this, if, you know, if it's allowed to, to, because it's not serving alcohol. It, there's no, there's nothing to stop it from going way into the evening, way into the night. We already have, have received safety concerns about the South Shore Drive and people going too fast. There, in my understanding, there's a speaker, so we need to just, again, be ready for any sound ordinance complaints, just as long as we know what we're getting ourselves into.
Sure, the committee had the same concerns, and our police chief also is concerned about people traveling at a good rate of speed, and they come up behind this pedal pub, and they're going, they're only going 10 miles an hour. So, and that, that is a concern that we went through, but other communities are doing it, and we thought we'd give it a try for a year, and they come back and review it after that, just see how, how it works out. But like I said, we did have one before, and they obviously didn't come back, so I'm guessing they weren't very successful in having people run out and making a profit with it, so. They've, they've got safety concerns, they've got to deal with it.
Thank you.
Heidi, I believe in the packet, there was discussion about lights and signage, and so it was visible, at least I recall reading that. Our approval was also conditioned on taking traffic measures, that they're very clear of where they're driving and not impeding traffic. We listened to the concerns of the police chief, contradiction to our prohibition of drinking in public on our roadways and our streets. I had commented to him, so if someone is on this adventure around town, and they just step off with a beer and decide to walk around town, they'd be subject to open container citation that is already on our books. They cannot provide alcohol. People bring their own, as we noted. They can't be parked and just be sitting on the side of the road for hire. This is an organization, or an organizing entity that you would contract with them. It appears that they're contracting with various businesses and have a route that they would take to those versus kind of driving around town for buses.
There is a part of that package.
And it's not, yes. And it looks like they're going around the lake, which again, that's raised the concern on the South Shore Drive concerns that have already been raised. And I understand that they're not being served alcohol, but they can bring their own, which, again, then there's no monitoring of how much they drink as they're getting off, getting into their cars to drive home. So again, I just want to make sure that we vetted this and know what we're getting ourselves into. And I realize that this is an annual taxi license, and we can revoke that when they go up for renewal if there's issues. Can we, if they, if there's something egregious, can we pull their license at any time, or do we have to wait for a renewal?
They violate, well, first of all, if they were to violate some condition of the license, then you'd be able to suspend or revoke the license. You need to have a hearing to do that, but you can do it. If they violate some law, well, that's what our law enforcement's in, in a form. If the license is without any conditions, it will make it difficult to suspend or revoke it simply because the only way that you could do that is if they actually have a law violation. So if there's a law violation, and they're convicted, but I'll just tell you that the process of that is that someone will be over with by the time we have them convicted. So I, I think your point is well taken, that if this license is issued without conditions, the reality of it is going to be that it's not going to, you could not renew it for the next year, but it's going to be very difficult to revoke or suspend.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we do have a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose if that motion carries.
All right, Item B, at consideration to a resolution accepting a donation to the Fire Department of $10,000, fire footmen from BPD. Kelsey or Chief Hanson?
Chief, Hanson, you want to come up and explain that? And where, where are you going to use this money at?
Vice Mayor and Council, yeah. I was approached and then reached out to the BPD Charitable Committee and asked for a $10,000 donation for body armor. Over the summer, we had a countywide disaster drill, emphasis on a school shooting, and kind of creating some cohesion between police department and fire department now with patient care essentially. And so one of the glaring issues we saw was we don't have any body armor to be able to go inside of a building. So this will remedy that. So with $10,000, we can buy 10 vests, armored vests, and 10 helmets.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee considered this and is recommending that the council approve accepting the donation from BPD.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, to make a resolution accepting the $10,000 from BTD. All in favor with the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that motion carries. And Kelsey, do we normally send a letter? Thank you to, to BTD for this donation, this gift from you, Dan?
We will, and I, I know we usually send a charitable donation to it.
For that, that's so, but that's, it's great that we've got businesses and it's important to have a fire, at least a fire.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. You got anything else to add? Nothing further?
Okay, then we move on to another committee. Aaron?
All right. 9A, consideration of the first reading of ordinance 521 amending section 702, liquor and wine licensing of the city code. Kelsey, Kelsey, go ahead and please elaborate on this.
Vice Mayor and Council, several of these items is cleaning up some of our definitions for, that are in our ordinance to be consistent with state statute. Want the, point out that on the on-sale liquor licenses, we actually have a special legislation to issue a liquor license to Lodge on the Lake. That's why you see some very specific language about 1200 East Shore Drive. That's something that's been in place for...
2005, the legislature approved that special legislation. We've had it all along, but we never had it in the, in our ordinance specifically. And I think it's a good idea to do that so that five years from now or 10 years from now, we don't wonder why it's there.
Is, is this something, Charlie, we had another business in town that wanted to do that similar to what they're doing at the Lodge?
They would have to get special legislation, just like the Lodge did. And so they took it to the legislature. It's a, it was a sechelon in 2005. So I'm not saying somebody else couldn't do it.
Yeah.
But it would have to be the legislature that allowed it, not us.
Right. You'd have to get an, okay, thank you.
Or an empty hotel that would furnish food.
Right.
I'll just kind of skip through these. Well, it's number four and five. Number four is just expanding our ability to issue a temporary on-sale license to a brewer if they ever so requested. And then item number five is, also provides the ability for the council to issue a special license, which is like a temporary license to an existing on-sale liquor license holder to dispense at a community festival within the city. The one we probably talked about the most at liquor and gambling is item number seven. It's not necessarily required by statute. This is in kind of the model ordinance that the League of Minnesota Cities puts out that we currently do not have in our ordinance, deals with hours in operation of sale. Primarily, it provides basically an endpoint for when they can consume the alcohol at a licensed facility. We did have this issue come up. Actually had a license holder request that we consider adding something like this to our ordinance, to basically just give them a little bit more ability to tell patrons when to leave their establishments. So I believe the liquor gambling committee will make a recommendation to approve the first reading. I still move.
Second?
We've got a motion, a second. Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that motion carries.
And then I have one more, which is 9I. It's a, it's a permit application for gambling from the main site of Detroit Lakes for Rattle Tip Horse Paddle Will and Holdabbs on February 24th, and the Liquor, Stole, and Gambling Committee recommends approval. I still move.
Second? Motion's in second. Any discussion? This is for the main society. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that motion carries. Anything else in there?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, then moving down to Public Safety Commission. Mike, did you have anything at all?
Nothing, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, Renaldo, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Vice Mayor, just, we removed 11B from the set.
We have 11B, correct. And I'm going to get that turned over here and slide it here now. We have 11B. It's a consideration to approving licenses for 2024 pursuant to their application and fees. And Mike, why, why did you want to remove yourself from that?
I have two rental properties under consideration for new, new permits.
So he's an applicant, he shouldn't, he should have stayed for vote. He's stayed for vote, he has, okay. Would you like to make that motion down to the item, Dr. Ebert?
Sure. I'll make a motion to consider approving the licenses for 2024 pursuant to their application and fees.
We've got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that motion carries. Okay, this will go down to the mayor again, and he's got a few items here that he needs to get some help on. The first one, he's been looking long and hard to find somebody. He'd like to have somebody from the city council to be part of Minnesota Flyers, Jim Estenford. And when he comes back for vacation, you would make him very happy if you came up and said, "Sign me up." But that, that spot is open. Let's go to IMB, next one. These are all appointments now. Next one is consideration to appoint Andrew Gag to the planning commission to fill out the seat of Tyler Swenson, which I butchered, expired on December 31st. So I need somebody to make a motion.
So moved.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that. And Andrew Gag is in. If you go to item C, consideration to appoint Kelsey McCallum to the planning commission, you could make a seat down with Susan. His term expires on December 31st, 2025.
Motion, second.
Motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that. Motion carries. Then we go down to D, consideration earlier, appoint Claire Nanner to the Art and Culture Commission. This is Nanner's.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
February 28th, she has a three-year term. So we've got motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got that. Then let's go down to E. We've got a good point, making initial Arts and Culture Commission.
So moved.
Prior to, she's a three-year term. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got that squared. We've got item F, consideration to free appoint Karen to the park board. Her start is completed for a term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this will go down to item G, consideration to appoint Karen Skrold to the park board. Her would be for a three-year term. All in favor say aye.
No.
Okay, we're going down pretty fast here. Now, here's, here's, here's one that we need to, and...
We need to finish that vote.
Okay, we've got to finish that vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got, oppose. Okay, we've got that. Take care of it. Then let's go down to the next one, H. Now, this is, you know, the mayor's always looking for volunteers. The city needs volunteers on many, many committees. So if we've got somebody on the audience that says, "Boy, I'd like to do something for the city. My interest lies in this specific area. Please come into the city office and say, 'I'd like to be one of those volunteers.'" Because we do need volunteers. Here's a spot. Kim Betchers, it's a, will be on the board after February 28th. So we need a replacement. So if you think you might have an interest of being on the park board, go into the office and tell the people that you're interested. Get your name on the list and you might, might get yourself appointed volunteer to the park board. That's how easy it works. So we've got a spot open there. Next spot. Now we move to the I. We've got a spot here for the public utilities, Jeff Perkins. He has completed his second term, which expires on February 28th, and he is eligible to be appointed to the third term. He wants to serve, so we need most second. And all in favor of there say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that. Carries. And we go down to item, consider another public utilities person, GL Tucker. He has completed his third term after February 28th, so we need people there. So if you're interested, talk to the mayor, talk to Renan. So we're going to pass that back, because we need somebody there coming up. Also, we have talked to Tony Schmitz on the turf from the Tourism Bureau. He hasn't decided if he wants to be up for another term. So we're waiting for that. So there might be another term there. So basically, we've got to go into Elder now. We've got consideration appointment of Tourism Bureau for Doug Astle. He's completed his three, three years terms. So we're going to need a replacement. They're two, some are interested. And being in the Tourism Bureau wants to see the mayor, maybe decide to get one of them. Going down here, going down the list now, let's see if, if any of the council people, everybody, say, "I, gee, you have anything that you want to bring up?"
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
If I can. I actually would like to go back to our public works agenda. Item 6B and 6C. I asked Charlie how he wants us to do this. So there, on those two resolutions, we, there's a component of the resolution where you order the improvement. Ordering the improvement for special assessments, when it's city-initiated, we need a four-fifths vote. So Ron is not a voting member, because he's running the meeting. And Alderman Duraney is here now. So we actually have the four-fifths majority that we need, assuming you all vote in affirmative. Okay? If we don't pass that part of the resolution tonight, we'll have to approve it next month before we award the bid. And of course, if we're short people next month, it could be a problem. So I guess what I'd like to see done is the council basically make a motion to reaffirm approving that resolution, take another vote, and then we can have the full council vote. Are you, is that satisfied?
That's right. And you could either do it as a motion reconsider, or as a motion to reaffirm. It doesn't matter. But the idea is that we don't have to take it up again next month, since we now have four fifths.
Okay, that, why don't you go ahead and do 6B, let's do some...
All right, everybody. I'll make a motion to reaffirm the consideration to resolution ordering improvements, approving plans, specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids for the 2024 Street Rehabilitation Project.
Second? Yeah, motion in second. Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that. Everybody said aye. So we've got that squared. Now how about a side seat?
Item C is a motion to reconsider the resolution ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids for the Willows Bridge Street.
Second.
Assuming Charlie's okay with it.
Okay. And we've got that written down then. So all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose to that. Motion carries. And, gee, you've got that this in the nick of time. How's that new baby doing?
Good, really good.
So it's very good. So we'll go back here. Let's see here. Got a couple other things that we're, let's go. Before we go down, I've got a couple other things here, too. The American County Assessor has notified the city for order review for 2024. It's coming up for assessments to help the police department community room on April 30th. This meeting is at 9:30. The city charter requires the three council members and the mayor be in attendance. At, right now, the city has Alderman Jones Association certified through July 1st of 2026. We have Alterman's Nameplate certified through July 1st of 2024, and Mayor Briggs certified through 2027. In the past, we've had, last year, we had Matt Wookiee there. So I would entertain a motion to someone to recommend all those people I just mentioned, unless we have other people that maybe would like to serve on that order review. But I want you to, please, require to take, be certified, and that's going to continue, and it's easy to have to be certified, too. Do we need to take action on this, Bishop?
Okay, go. And it's okay if you are certified and so...
Yeah. So it's just to let people know that we've got it and, and let the mayor know that we're going to have people that serve. You want to go ahead and make a motion on that, Dan?
Go ahead.
And so then, then other than that, also to let people know that we do need a person for the canvassing board from our seventh coming over, too. So if you could help out on that, we just need the election.
We do need someone for that, so...
Do we need a motion on that, or just let you know?
Um, yeah. Someone volunteer tonight.
If you're interested, we don't have someone for that. Cam's seen work out. Please, please see your councilor, your chairman hearing.
I don't know. What, what is that? So it's certifying the election. So we'll do it here in the city council chambers in November, but the county holds it for us, for the presidential primary. So the city, the largest city in the county, has to send a representative to be a part of the county canvassing board. And then you'll just meet, you'll certify the results of the election, essentially just go through what the results were, certify that, make a motion, and then we're done. Somebody has to go, because we're the one to see.
And it takes about an hour's time, normally, still, an hour, unless someone comes up with a big question and it takes a little bit longer, but everything runs smoothly.
This is March 7th.
Yeah, so the presidential primary election is being held on March 5th. So they're canvassing the results on the 7th. Yeah, sorry.
Someone hopefully, unless we got a volunteer to raise your hand. You want to do that?
They were in here.
Okay, let me do that then. And then before we finish up track, I've got one item here. The city received a city engineering, Minnesota, award, this for city engineers and associates of Minnesota for projects done with honorable mention for this past year. And John Pratt has worked very hard, along with the county. And this is for the West Lake Drive Street Utility Reconstruction for Detroit Lakes, 2023. We've got a plaque to hang in our office. And, but we straight speech, we thank you, John, and all the work he's done on that.
Why don't you nominate him to jump in the lake?
Here's your award, jump in the lake.
We'll throw it in the water, see if it falls away.
Okay. So, Jamie, do you have any?
No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, as a four-time pull or plunge jumper, I don't plan on doing it a fifth time. But I will sweeten the pot, and if one of us does choose to do it, I'll throw in a hundred bucks as well.
All right, there we go. More money for Matt. Jackie or Matt, did you have that?
No, thanks for Jackie for jumping. I appreciate it.
She, I bet she would need the first grand.
No, it doesn't matter.
I've just got to say, I'll be in Wisconsin that day, so I'll jump in the lake, go home, Wisconsin.
I have nothing.
You could be there in a chicken leg.
I'm not jumping in the lake.
Kelsey?
Vice Mayor and Council's just going to mention, privacy calendar invite, we'll bring to a tour of the public works facility at 2:30 on Friday. If you're available, feel free to come over. Barbie, if you want to come out and take some photos, you're welcome to.
Just show up at the, the...
Full parking is electric. Warehouse parking lot.
Thank you all for helping.